Committee of the whole meeting. Order. Ms. Henry. Counsel, would you call the roll, please?
Absolutely. Alderman Walters.
Missing.
Alderman Azier.
Excused.
Alderman Myers.
Here.
Alderwoman Emerson. Alderwoman Van Busker.
Here.
Alderman Bill Van Busker.
Here.
Alderwoman Memms. Alderman Ward.
He is. Said he was gonna be on here, so I'm sure he is not excused at the moment.
Alderman Scott.
Here.
Oh, Alderwoman Hayden.
I'm here.
All right. We have one, two, three, four, five, six. Thought I saw somebody else pop up there. Nope, okay. Okay. Teresa, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right. On the committee of the whole, do we still need six or will five suffice?
Five will suffice unless they're voting on anything.
Other than the approval of the meeting minutes from last time. Nope, there's Derek Ward. There we go. There's our sixth. All right. Thank you, Mr. Ward, for tuning in. All right, so looking for the approval of the July 6, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mary Jane Van Busker, seconded by Ms. Hayden. Any discussion? Any discussion hearing none. Call roll, please.
Alderman Mary Jane Van Busker?
Yes.
Alderman Hayden?
Yes.
Alderman Myers?
Yes.
Alderman Emerson?
Bill.
Alderman Bill Van Busker?
Bill.
Alderman Azier?
Yes. I'll vote for a yes for Azier, too.
He voted a yes.
I'm here.
Um, Ms. Memms?
Yes.
Alderman Memms?
Present.
Alderman Scott?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Memms, what we were voting on right as you came on was the approval of the July 6, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. What's your vote on that?
Oh, okay. Oh, then yes.
All right, thank you. Motion carries. All right, next is fiscal year 2021, 2022 Department Budget Presentations. Honorable Judge Tracy Phan, what do you have for us, ma'am?
Good evening. So you all have seen my budget and before you, I think the one thing that hasn't changed in the budget this year, there is a slight increase. And that increase is due to our implementation of the Show Me Courts. We're mandated under the Missouri Supreme Court to automate the municipal court. And all the courts in the state are now required to be on the Show Me Courts. As a result of that, there's certain specifications of equipment that we're required to purchase in order to be able to have the court automation function as it's supposed to. So you'll notice in the budget that I've presented to you all, there is an increase. And that is the bulk of the increase for that. Everything else is pretty much the same. The court is the smallest department in the city. And the things that we have are just generally salaries and anything you would need to run an office. So other than that, I don't think anything else has changed much.
Anybody got any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Memms?
Uh, my question is to you, is this something as we go down each one of these categories? Do we put, is there, do we need a motion?
No, this is strictly just the committee of the whole and them explaining, making a presentation as to their portion of the budget.
Okay, because I wanted to let the judge know that I went through everything line by line. And I was very pleased the details that she has in here for the things that she needs for her department. So I wanted to thank her for that. And as a whole, well, I'm just gonna speak for me to Judge Phan. Thank you for your presentation. And I really, I enjoyed the fact that you told us what you needed and what you have to have and the requirements. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Memms.
Ms. Henry, if you would, make note, Mr. Walters made it in at, uh, 6:07. Okay, anybody have any other questions for the judge before we move on to community development? Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
All right, community development, Ray Haderepor, Community Development Director. Give me a little check there on the mic.
Good evening. The packet you have in front of you is community development budget. I'm not gonna go out line by line, but I just briefly go through the main items. The office supply, uh, it's about 11,000. Operating supply, 3,000. Uniform, 3,300. Professional services, which is veterinary adoption services and tree service and pet cremation is about 105,000. Postage, which is mainly business license and liquor license and related item to the postage and mailing their certifications, 12,400. Printing and promotions, 7,000. Uh, dues and membership, 2,675. Equipment, 10,200. Temp agency services, which sometimes we need the help in the summertime as far as temp services, uh, 14,000. Weed brush and nuisance abatement, which includes also under that item, minor home repairs and dangerous structure, under 10,000. Uh, computer services, which includes software use, uh, encode maintenance, intergov and iPads. That's about 30,800. Education and training, 5,500. Travel and meals, 5,000. And fuels and repairs and fuels and vehicle services is about, uh, 8,100, 8,125. With that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Walters. Thank you.
Uh, Ray, I do have a question. On the meals and travel, it's such a round figure. How do they, how is this typically spread?
For the last couple of years, we, we did not utilize that much. But, uh, this year, we have the rental inspector. And he requested to obtain a CBO, which is Building Official Certifications. And generally, it's out of state, which in this time is the state of Colorado. And for room and board and traveling, costs quite a bit of money, so we just rendered up to that amount.
You did that, or he's going to do that this year?
Yes. Part of the education is gonna be this year, about, uh, a class or two. There's several classes involved and several weeks long. So one or two of the classes is this year and the rest is next year.
Can they be attended remotely via Zoom?
Uh, no, these have to be in person during the week. And they have to be attending the class. It's not an online class or attending through Zoom.
I just wonder, well, we don't know what'll happen with COVID, but it may be that they may adapt that, adopt that.
Exactly. We don't know at this point, yeah.
Okay, um, so my questions.
Anyone else? Mr. Ryan Myers.
Thank you. Hey, uh, Ray, this is more of a question for this year, but, um, I don't know if you have it off the top of your head. Do you know for the minor home repair, have we utilized that entire line item for this year?
I'm glad you asked that question. Uh, we are going, going to utilize the entire amount and maybe even more. We already have four to five properties lined up. And one of us is already completed and the second one in the process of being completed. So definitely, we're gonna utilize the entire amount this year.
That's awesome. That's good to hear. Um, yeah, 'cause I think it was 25,000 for this budget year, I believe. But if it's, if it's going to a good use, I'm 100% behind that.
Yes, it's gonna be utilized this year.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Mary Jane Van Busker?
Ray, I have a question on the 55,000 for weeds and brush. Are we ever reimbursed from that? I mean, when, when you go in and mow somebody's yard? And do we bill it on their taxes? And do we ever get any reimbursement on that?
Yes. The standard is every month, we send the notices, finance, and it goes out, uh, to the property owners to be paid. And I'll give you the previous years that, my understanding, in 2017 and 18, and possibly through 19, we did receive about $56,000 back from the, uh, being put in lean on the properties. So we did get a lot of those funds back.
Okay, thank you.
Bill Van Busker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Haderepor, uh, is there, is there a change in the amount for veterinary services from last year? If so, how much? Or does that contract go on from, you know, is it for more than a year period of time?
Two years, and then they have an option to renew another two years. As far as the service itself, there was no change in the, on the amount that we've budgeted for 21, 22.
You don't anticipate any, any change?
No, I don't anticipate any change.
Mr. Walters?
Yes, Ray, on the information you gave Alderwoman, uh, Van Busker, was that those three years, was that 56,000 we netted over three years or 56,000 each year?
No, it was a combination of those two to three years, not exactly 56,000 per year, but the combination of three years together.
Okay, so we're losing about a little bit over half.
Well, again, it depends. When, when we put lean on the property, we're not gonna get it until December, which is recouping some of the money from the previous year. So in order, in order to get a better understanding of the calculation, then we have to go back and calculate how much we received each year for the property that we, uh, charged the previous year.
Well, the leans are collectible only upon the sale of real estate, aren't they?
Yes.
So unless they sell their houses once a year, uh, we're probably not gonna see that.
That's correct. That's correct.
My home, I've lived there for close to 40 years now.
That's correct.
The point is, if we can somehow persuade these people rather than going to cutting it ourselves, we would be dollars ahead and also maybe teach a lesson of responsibility to some homeowners. So that's just my thoughts on it. Thank you.
I believe that's usually what you guys try to do from what I've seen, so I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
Anyone at home on the Zoom or on the board? Nope.
Pardon me?
Who was that?
That was me just gonna thank Ray for his report. I, I didn't have any questions 'cause I read it in detail. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
Next one will be parks, Dave Turner. What do you got for us, Big Dave?
Good evening, everybody. Uh, here to talk about the parks budget. I will just go mainly straight to the expenses there. That's what we're mostly looking at. Uh, as you can see, we are down a little bit in, uh, the civilian employee expenses. The Finance Department has come up with a formula that, uh, shows that at any given point in time, we may have 8% of our, uh, total job positions open. But the budget shows it as being, uh, totally full unemployment all the time. Uh, so that means that there's money dedicated that it will never be paid out. If we have two positions open at the parks, that money for those salaries are there and is locked up in salaries. And, and so there's been a formula added, um, through the finance to try to utilize that money a little better than what we have been. And that's citywide. So, uh, that's, that's interesting. That's something that's a little bit different. Different policy that we're, we're using to formulate the budget. And so I'm kind of excited to see how that's gonna work out. Major expenses that we have are about the same. Most of our contractual, um, our mowing is up to about $41,000. That is higher, uh, than in previous years. Typically, we were under 30,000. Uh, we have gone with the method of just mowing every week. We tell our contractor they're on every week, uh, and we tell, and now we give them a call if we want them to skip a week. Before, we were trying to set a maximum number of mows. We're only gonna mow 18 times per year, which is why we kept it under 30,000. Uh, what that did is our parks didn't look very good. So to ameliorate that and address that, we just are getting mowed every week and we're just gonna go ahead and pay that money. We believe it's better for us and better for the citizens. Uh, also, we do have some asset management money there. The parks is gonna, from next year on, uh, have, have a hand in paying for the asset management. Next year, our bill will only be 11,800. Uh, but as we are implementing this, uh, we left some extra money in there in case there's any, uh, equipment upgrades that we need at the parks, uh, and additional training. You know, if we have to call in tech support with this company, I don't know that that's, that's provided, uh, with the basic yearly fee, uh, to be part of, of city, city works. Also, a small increase on our, our security contractor. We're, we're pushing that, uh, up basically year-round right now, uh, for our curfew checks. Throughout all of our parks after 11:00 PM, we get checked twice in every property. It's been working fabulously. Uh, we've had a lot less traffic in the parks after hours, which means a lot less things that are broken and vandalized that we have to fix later. So we're very thankful for that. Let's see. Uh, we do have a very high bottom line budget number, that 1.7 million dollars. We have never been notified of our, our big project for the 2021 year. Uh, that was the Carnegie Tennis Court grant. The last I heard from the state, they keep pushing it back every month. They have been since April. Last month, I heard that it was gonna be August 25th. Knock on wood. Uh, let's hope that, that comes through. Uh, we have upped that amount. What our request was, was for a $385,000 in the last budget year. Prices of materials, concrete, steel, the things that we're gonna be using to build these tennis courts have all jumped up in price dramatically. So, uh, through discussions with city administration, we went ahead and put, uh, an additional 20% in on that. There is a way to file back with the state to request full funding for this, since we have been waiting on the federal government. What is it? Since December of, until 2019. December of 2019 is when I wrote that grant. Uh, so we have been put off more than a year. Uh, the prices have gone crazy. And we are gonna have to, uh, go back and, and renegotiate this, this, uh, project with the state so that we can fully fund the project that they have said is worth funding. So we passed at the state level, uh, these things have, have locked up at, at the federal level. Another thing, uh, big expenditures or capital expenditures, uh, Critzer Playground, I'm sorry, Carnegie Playground, our big, um, space net, that big red net that's up there at the center of our main playground, uh, we are gonna replace that. We believe that we're approaching a, a safety issue there. The concrete underneath is breaking. That was actually the floor of the original shelter house at that park. We repurposed that to be, uh, to be the, the base of that space net, uh, that is cracking up pretty bad. We don't like the look of it. We're gonna go ahead and tear that out and replace that either with a new space net of some sort or a completely different, uh, play apparatus. So we're just gonna tear that all the way down to the ground and install something new there. And another thing I do wanna point out, our pond wall engineering fees, that's through George Butler and Associates, the ci, the city's on-law, on-call engineers. Uh, we are in, in negotiations, uh, for that $40,000 number. That is not it. That is not what will be in the final, but we've been talking to them about exactly what we are trying to accomplish there. Uh, we need to dredge that pond. Uh, that has silted in five feet. We are barely at 10 feet deep, uh, at the very deepest part right now. Uh, back when I first got hired, we were, there was large portions of that pond that were 15 feet deep. As far as storm water retention, it's not doing as much as it worked as it could be, you know? Uh, that, the stormwater, uh, system is tied into that pond. So, uh, it's important to make sure that we're at a capacity that works for the city. And we need to address the wall anyway. So, uh, we're gonna have the, the engineers look into a solution for all of that, come up with an engineering plan that we can use to go forward. Other than that, uh, we do have a, one other truck that we're gonna replace. Uh, everything else is pretty much contractual fees, taking out the trash, keeping, keeping the grass mowed. If anybody has any questions about any specific line item, I can do my best to, uh, answer that question.
Anyone?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have a question for a line item. What I do want to say today is thank you so much for, uh, staying on top of what we had promised the voters when we went after the tax and making sure that all the parks receive some repairs. And so I just wanted to tell you, I appreciate that. And I think the voters will too. So when we come back before them, after them seeing this budget item, they will appreciate the work that the parks are doing.
Thank you very much.
Ryan Myers.
Dave, I just had a quick question. Where, where, where is the hard line for the BMX phone at?
The BMX, I'm sorry, what was it?
The, it's the, it says telephone, it's the hard line for the BMX. Is there actually, do they still utilize like the spotting tower? Is that where the phone is for the BMX track?
Okay, what we're actually doing is we have a hotspot for them to use, a cell phone, and they use that to sign up their kids. They go into the, the USA BMX site and they score points every night that they're there, they're racing. And then also to collect credit cards. So it's not necessarily a hard line, but we are paying for a hotspot, uh, so that they can, they can operate, collect money, and notify the kids. The kids will get their, their national points updated in real time.
Awesome. Okay, yeah, I was just, I was just curious. I was wondering, I didn't even know what a hard line, no. And then just echo what Ms. Memms said. I mean, yeah, sprucing up the parks, I think that's gonna make a pretty good, uh, case, kind of going down the line for any tax, uh, whatever you guys decide to do with the taxes going, going down the road.
Thank you very much.
Bill Van Busker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ryan actually asked one of the questions I had about the hard line at BMX. I was curious about that. Appreciate your answer. Is that, is that, uh, year-round there? Do you have availability?
Yeah, we get a pretty good deal with our, uh, and they do race from April till November. So shutting off a service almost like a utility for three, four months out of the year doesn't work that well, you know? So, uh, they do turn that hotspot back into us at the end of the season. And then they, uh, we issue that back out in, in March. And but sh, shutting that off and then restarting that service again, uh, it, it kinda doesn't pay to do that.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to comment on, you talked about security and security services. And I, I really appreciate the fact that security at the parks and all of our parks have been improved. And that you yourself have really been diligent in working on that and the park board and, uh, done a lot of things to improve that. And I appreciate that. I know the citizens are, uh, approve of that and are very, uh, well, I wouldn't say excited about the fact, but certainly, uh, they are, uh, like the fact that security's been improved there. I know, um, I have discussed problems related to park security with a number of, of people in our ward who live close to our parks in, in the past. And, uh, they really appreciate the fact that you made those improvements. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, some aspect that most folks don't think about, it's, it's actually really obvious is we have a lot of neighbors. You know, there's a lot of properties that touch our properties that we maintain. And we do have a duty and a responsibility to do the best by, by our neighbors.
All right. Anyone else? Dave, I also will tell you, I appreciate, uh, you, your employees and the park board for working hard on, on, uh, the lighting and the security for all the parks. Done a great job with that. I appreciate, uh, all the work you've done on it. Look forward to see what else is gonna be fixed in the parks and make them even more beautiful than what we already have. Really, really appreciate how hard you're working. I, I know how hard you work on all that and what you're staffing and doing. Appreciate all you do.
Well, thank you very much.
Anybody else? All right, seeing none. Thank you, good sir. Citywide Governing Body Admin Law and Risk Management Fund, Damon Hodges, city administrator. What do you have for us, good sir?
Yes, good evening. Overall, it was a decrease for our general fund for the citywide. There were a few things that we increased. One was the tuition reimbursement. We had several employees that took advantage of that, uh, this year and have more in the, uh, waiting coming next year. So, uh, we, last year, we had dropped it from, uh, eight to five. And of course, the year we dropped it from eight to five, we had more employees that wanted to utilize it but unable to. Uh, and so this year, we put that back up to 8,000, which allowed them to utilize it, pays for one class, three credit hours for, um, professional, well, for college credit. So, uh, it's a great benefit to our employees, but also it's even a better benefit when they are taking advantage of it. Uh, the other thing is for is the professional services. You would notice, uh, the appraisal services, uh, is the item that was added there. The, last year, we had the salary study. This year is the appraisal services. Those are ones that we are gonna utilize from around the city. Does everyone hear me? Okay. Uh, around the city is for is doing appraisal services on the properties that we have. Uh, it's something we had the, uh, questions about earlier this year that we got a, uh, RFP out. And, uh, this coming year, we'll be utilizing those to do appraisals of properties throughout the city. Uh, the other one is the, uh, printing and promotions. Uh, was a slight increase there, mainly just to, uh, portion was the increase of the city newsletter. Um, and then the other portion was overall marketing and branding of the city. Giving us more opportunity to brand ourselves and market ourselves throughout, uh, not here, just locally, but also regionally. The one you would see is Isleside Legal Council. Uh, that was a funding agreement, uh, that we did with the CID. Uh, that's a reimbursable item. Uh, we had to put it in the budget because as a revenue, there will be expense to that. So that's the one we had did before, uh, the continuation of that. Then that, everything else is pretty much the same regarding citywide that we had before, uh, recent years.
Okay. Ms. Emerson's.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Uh, my question is, I believe the end of August, that post-heat rates are going to go up again. Have that, has that been taken into account?
As far as, uh, we did an increase. It, as, you're talking about as far as mailing the newsletters or just in general? Yes, uh, that was part of our increase. Uh, we, before, we were about 20,000. Now it's 21,500.
Okay, next up, Bill Van Busker.
Thank you, sir. The, uh, you may have, have mentioned this, I don't know, but, uh, you talked about citywide advertising, but then there's citywide branding. What is the branding versus?
Yes, so the branding is, um, it's what your city is made of. So we, we start to use our vision, start to use our, our, uh, it's what your city is made of, so we, we start to use our vision, start to use our, what was it, the, the line, catch line to brand who we are. So we provide services to citizens and that branding creates so that when a person understands, when they see the city at right time, what they're here to receive. You know what I'm saying?
So it kind of goes hand in hand with that advertising part of it?
Yes, yeah. It's pretty much hand in hand.
Thank you.
Mr. Walter.
Yes, I'm looking at the elections line, $40,000. How many elections are we holding this year?
We don't have a number, but we put the number in place in order for us to figure that out. That's typically the amount that we put in place.
There's no regular city election?
There's what?
There is no regular city election?
No, there's not. But we do put a placeholder in case we do have an election. So whenever we bring something before y'all, like we're doing this coming, next meeting of the use tax, if that's decided to move forward, we'll have money in order for it to be on the ballot.
What I'd like to know in preparation for that discussion, which I'm sure is right around the corner, is what a regular city election costs us? And if we were to piggyback with other elections that may be running later this year rather than in November, such as February, March in particular, August, I think there will be elections.
Well, that's what we typically do, if we put, there's only certain days that it's set to have elections.
I understand.
And so we will piggyback those, so those are decided, but the election board, they did be up, who owes what based off the elections that, who decided to go in those?
I understand how they divvy it up and all that, I just wondered, I'd like to, for the edification of the rest of the board and the public, as to how much we will be spending if we hold an election, say, in November versus August.
Oh, well, that's hard to say because it's also depending on who will decide to run those timeframes, so we don't know that ahead of time. Say for instance, we had one, I think it was this last year or the year before, where the, the amount was more than typical, basically because ultimately only one person decided to run, we had to have election at that timeframe, so.
Yes.
It's depending on who may decide to run at that time.
And these election years, are these from calendar year or from November 1?
Would you, would you repeat that question?
In your budget going forward, are we looking at for the calendar year? When does your calendar year start for these elections?
Yeah, it's calendar year for the budget.
For the, for the election?
I'm not sure what you mean.
Where do the elections fall, is November 1 in next year's budget or this year's?
So you have one in November being next year's, this is fiscal budget.
So it's the fiscal budget?
So our, our budget is based off the fiscal year.
October 31st is the end, November 1st is the beginning, okay. So anything there would be from November going forward? If we find out who may be, what may be?
Well, we actually, go ahead.
Well, what may be open and what might possibly be, because there may be quite a bit of savings you can have there if we're able to piggyback on with another election coming forward. The election board will have a feeling and an inkling of what's going on with that.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, we, we do try to piggyback is, but we don't know exactly, I can't tell you if everybody in Jackson County.
The reason why I ask is because we have a bill on before us tonight that puts an election in November.
Yeah.
I don't know of any other election happening in November, so that's the most expensive route to go.
You don't know of any other cities are running during the November or?
Not that I'm aware of. So that, that is probably the most expensive.
Neither one of us know that, I mean, we wouldn't know that until.
Well, I want to find out.
Until after August, but that's not something you would know.
Well, I know, but what's in, with the bill before us tonight, it does specifically say it would be in November.
Correct.
It's in the language of the ballot, of the, of the package in tonight's thing. So somebody's made that decision that it should be in November and I think that we should look at all possibilities going forward. For other dates.
Okay, I mean, certain elections are at certain times, so February can only be a certain type of election. It's not able just to be any general election. April is typically in November.
Typically, but it can be anything in April, it can be anything in August.
That's what I said, general elections, April, then you have November and you have August. February is not just for any, any type of.
I wouldn't suggest doing it in the coldest month of the year anyway.
November typically, quite a few people do utilize the November ballots for items. Is that what you're asking?
I don't think we'll have anything this year, I'd be surprised.
All right, regionally, I mean, eastern Jackson County, you don't think anybody else will be?
I think you got your point across, Mr. Walter.
I beg your pardon?
We'll take it, we'll take it up when we get to that item, you got your point across, I understand, I think they understand too.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? All right, what else do you have for us, Mr. Hodges?
This portion.
Let me, let me interrupt you. It was pointed out to me by somebody that was listening in that if the sound quality, the sound is, is like they're hearing from these microphones, that if they're recording the same way, it might be hard for people to hear. I think it's just become a habit, even though we talked about this in the beginning. Need to enunciate very well and you need to speak about like this. Till they're having trouble hearing you, you weren't loud enough. Very good that they can hear you, but. Mr. Ward.
Yeah, and it, it's actually as you turn your head too, I mean, I think these microphones are just highly directional.
Yeah, that's.
Some people are speaking, I'm only getting about every third word.
Yeah, I was getting to that point, thank you. So anyway, speak up if you would, make sure that if you move the microphone, you hit the button where it turns red, so when you move it, you don't have a lot of noise. But you need to have it adjusted where when you're speaking like this, it's going directly at the microphone. Because if you turn, like Mr. Ward said and others have said, if you notice it does in fact start to fade out. So we're going to have to concentrate a little bit harder on making sure that people can hear us. So we're going to have to make an concerted effort till it becomes a little more of a habit to be able to be heard. Mr. Van Busker.
Okay, yeah, if you'll allow me and bear with me, then I'll repeat everything I've said.
No, no, that's quite all right, that's quite all right.
Okay.
They heard you, it just wasn't.
We'll forego that then, I guess.
Thank you. Don't even start. Mr. Hodges, sorry to interrupt you, go ahead.
No problem. Our next one is the governing body, it's very similar to last year. As far as budget, the item we're looking at is citywide cleanup and coupons. Citywide cleanup is 40,000, same amount of budget last year, but we're looking at utilizing a portion of that to help with a potential grant in order to do recycling and other programs. We've had quite a few citizens reach out. There was a program, I think I'm, Ms. Emerson's pretty familiar with the one with Mark, that is a continual amount, I think it's around 30,000. We're not going for that this year, this year we're going to do a couple of recycle programs that will be citywide, allow us to get a bit grasp on what our citizens are wanting and do a survey after that to see what they're wanting regarding that. See what type of actual use we get from it. The grant gives, is through Mark, it's a good opportunity for us to get a feel for the type of programs and the type of recycling programs our citizens write. So kept the amount the same, we just reutilize a portion of that amount to do the recycling.
Hang on, Mr. Van, Mr. Walters. Ms. Bims, were you wavered to speak?
Are you talking to me?
Yes, ma'am, I saw your hand waving, I just want to make sure you were.
Oh, no, 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 I'm, I'm okay.
Hey, Mr. Walter, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hodges, this cleanup business that we, the city will be involved in, does this include any types of toxic material disposal?
No, would be not, when we recycle, we're thinking about the programs like, say for instance, well, they do recycle for paint or they do recycle for a computer and electronics, those are the type of programs they typically have.
Okay, so nothing noxious. And so this is where we would be able to participate by doing it when the city has a cleanup program or it'll be ongoing every day?
No, it would not be ongoing, it'd be like a one-time event. What you do is you hire the contractor, comes out and does the event. And then they, then we advertise the day, then people come to us and utilize that event at that time.
Okay, well, I'm glad to hear we're expanding it, I think it's needed.
Mr. Van Busker.
Okay, did I understand you say it would be for electronics and things of that sort?
We're looking at, electronics is one of them, which they, you know, like computers or things like that sort. The other one is looking at recycling program for like paints and household disposable items.
Okay, good, I think that would be productive, some types of recycling, I don't seem to be that productive nowadays.
Yeah, it's dependent on the program.
Unfortunately, yeah, a lot of recyclables are, are being sent, well, they used to be sent back to China, now they're going to other countries and a lot of them burned and abandoned. I think that type of recycling probably is.
Speak up a little bit, Mr..
Is productive and would be good for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Van Busker. Anyone else? All right, thank you, Damon, what next, anything next?
Our next one is the administration. Amount is pretty much the same for overall. We did add a part-time position, which will help out an HR person. When I say part-time, it would be, would not be a full-time, no benefits, it's a part-time position. Helps it out with, we have one HR person that handles hiring, handles the benefits, handles the investigations, handles the employee complaints, handles pretty much everything. We've seen over the years that that went to one person, especially in the past two years, which the amount of workload due to COVID and COVID response is, is not a good, as far as overall efficiency for the city. We got 100, close to 130 personnel, 130 going out of one person. So we're looking at someone who can bring with us additional expertise to help out with that position. So we thought part-time because ultimately we don't, capacity-wise, I think it would be beneficial, but not necessary to do a full-time position. The other ones, as far as items, you'll see a few of them that may have changed from the location, like our codification, that was in our contractual services, we moved and put in professional services, just the amount decreased, but also just put it in another location. I do some memberships or based on, there are things that we're a part of as far as organization-wise. Your computer services, they range pretty much from everything from our Zoom webinar, which is a new one this year, before that was through the CARES funds, but this year we tried, decided to continue on with that subscription, which is $550 for the year, for the year. And another item called HootSuite. Is anyone familiar with HootSuite? So HootSuite is a, is a social media managing tool. So when we put our posts and we put our things up and it tracks our, our responses, but it puts it all in one place. It's used quite a bit by quite a few companies, especially with us, with the amount of social media avenues that we utilize, everything from Facebook to Twitter to Instagram and things of that sort. So it tracks also the responses of those, so like we've been doing Throwback Thursdays, if anyone's seen those pictures online, getting quite a bit of fanfare from that, increasing our capacity as a, as far as outreach and marketing, along with Feel Good Fridays, several other things that Tony, since she's joined our team, has put together for us that continues to show a way of getting the information out to our, our citizens. We want to continue building that avenue and like we said before, when we get to things like snow, so they'll know where to look at and look for that information and be aware of how we, how we transport our information to them as far as citizens. Other than that, regarding that one, it's pretty much the same amount. We did increase our goal setting, before it was 5,000, now it's 5,500, which is what we pay this past year for our goal setting.
All right, anyone on this portion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Ms. Mim.
Did, Mr. Hodges, did I hear you say that we have a part-time person coming to help out in personnel?
That's what we put in the, the application, I mean, the budget.
Well, thank you, Jesus, I've been waiting to hear that one. All righty, I appreciate it, it's just that that was something gravely needed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Almost made me shout.
Okay, anyone else on this portion, we've got 15 minutes, so. You got a question, pop up here so we can get it done. All right, next.
Our next one is our risk management fund. It's an operating fund, ultimately our professional services like our health care and our HR consulting, along with MML conference and with risk management claims, we, it's a general amount, we put in 90,000. That's pretty much it on that one, it's a pretty short fund. It's pretty short in amount as well as line items for it.
Anyone? Yep, there it goes. That was slow. Go ahead.
Did you, uh, did you go through the law portion of this or did I miss something?
You didn't miss anything you hadn't gotten, were you?
Oh, there it is.
It's right, right before risk management and our.
You can do that, thanks.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, my, my fingers.
I figured he'd come back to it. I wasn't going to let him get by with that going there.
My fingers must have. The law portion, questions on risk management. On our law portion, the salary at the, at the top is for the prosecutor, prosecutor salary. Guys had, we approved that increase back earlier this year. It will continue on, I think it's for three years, is what we have with current city prosecutor. We also pay for a training that's required for him as far as continuation of being a city prosecutor. The other one is legal services, slightly increased that one, but pretty much stayed the same. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can.
Okay. Am I, okay. So everything on there pretty much stayed the same, other than the difference with the annual salary increase that we approved by ordinance, wide resolution earlier this year.
Anybody got anything on, on this, anybody got any questions? Move on to the next then.
Thank you, Alderman Van Busker for noticing that. The other one is our capital sales tax. I'll go ahead and go through all those, the three departments for tonight. Citywide was a pole sign, a flagpole replacement. The amount, I think Alderman Van Busker and you and I have discussed this quite a few times. We actually had a contractor on his way to go fix it, I don't think you remember that Saturday, and when I found out someone had hit it, that's what we think has happened because the way it's broken up. So I have some foundational repairs along with replacing the flagpole and the upgrades there. So we're going to have to have a mortar come in to fix the, fix it. But that sign needs to be replaced or at least replaced my, or at least repaired. The other ones are our workstation replacement. As far as our program, we try to replace a few each year, not trying to do all of them at once. This is the 12 scheduled for this year along with the monitors and then the one deal server. This year, it's about the same amount that we had previous years, the amount has not really increased on that one. The other one is in community development, we have one replacement of a four-door sedan, a replacement vehicle for them of 35,000.
All right, Mr. Walters.
Yes, I do have a few questions, the first one has to do with the lease sign replacement. Does insurance cover that damage, I'm just curious?
No, we did not follow with our insurance, but typically yes, under our deductible amount.
What is our deductible amount? What is our deductible amount?
Depending on the item, so I think there is a Teresa, maybe you can help me on that one.
Yes, sir?
A deductible amount. A deductible.
For the sign?
Uh, just in general for, for accidents.
Well, our deductibles vary, so we have a thousand dollar deductible, we have a ten thousand dollar deductible, we have a twenty-five hundred dollar deductible, we have another ten thousand deductible, so it depends on the type of claim that it is, whether it's sewer, auto, auto liability.
This one here, we did not have a claim, we did not have a victim, I mean, we didn't have a, a party to, to make a claim against. Not sure if anyone hit it or not, we just thought it might be it based off what it looked like.
Well, it's a twenty-one thousand dollar bill. You may try. That's why we buy the insurance, is for unknown calamities and this certainly fits in the twenty-one thousand, highest that Teresa mentioned is ten thousand. Will come to the good of about eleven thousand dollars, so I think we ought to pursue it.
We'll look into it.
Thank you, I appreciate that. We have another question, on the capital expenditure on the.
Can hear you.
I'm sorry, I heard something, I didn't know what it was. All right, okay, thank you. The capital expenditures, they're, they'll be replacing twelve workstations, six bill monitors. What's the life of these when they're in service here?
Five, probably about five years.
Five years? That's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Van Busker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I really appreciate the fact that you are addressing the, the signage for the police department, the flagpole. It just, it didn't look too good and I think that'll be a good improvement for us and something that we really need to be done. Thank you, thank you for addressing it.
Anyone else? Ms. Mim, you waving or are you just adjusting?
I was just checking to see if my mic was on or off.
Yeah, it's on.
Okay.
All right, anyone else? Got, you have anything else for us, Damon?
I do not.
All right. Unless has any, unless anybody has anything else, I will ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Ryan Myers got it and Miss Hayden has the second. All right, let's do this by affirmation, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? All right, we are adjourned at six fifty-five. Don't forget.